All right. Madam Chair, do we have to do anything about the closed meeting?
Thank you very much. Yes, all of my colleagues of the great group have arrived. In order to comply with Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on July 17, 2017, to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Is there a motion? Moved by Ms. Corbett Sanders, seconded by Mr. McElveen. All of those in favor? That motion is unanimous. Thank you all very much. Yes, we will continue now.
All right, thank you. So, we are at our work session on the Jeb Stuart renaming. We are running a little bit late, so let's try to be efficient if we can. I think that our goal today is to, you know, we're not going to vote tonight. The vote is on July 27th. So, our goal today is to try to nail down a main motion, if we can, and any follow-on motions, or if people have ideas for amendments to the main motion that they want to start talking about. So, we'll try to get that done. And then also, this is an opportunity to ask staff any questions we have about, you know, the logistics of it. And so, I think I'll start, since we only have one Board member who has developed a straw man draft main motion. I think I'll start with Ms. Evans, and if we could get that up on the Board, that would be good. And this is also our opportunity to ask each other questions about, so ask Ms. Evans questions about her motion, so.
Can I just ask a point of order first? Was it not a next step from our last, our June work session, that you were doing those? That you and Mr. Wilson were doing those?
Well, that changed. So, thanks. Go ahead, Ms. Evans.
So, thank you, Ms. Hines. So, this is, as I said in my note to the Board, the straw man. After, you know, pondering some of these things and having some conversations, I put this together, not as a final motion, but as something that incorporates some of the ideas that I've heard from folks. I also look back at, well, I have read all the materials from both sides and looked at what some other jurisdictions have done as well. So, I tried to incorporate different ideas into this as a starting point for conversation today. And I hope that at the end of today's work session, that we have a motion. It doesn't mean that, you know, at least something that, there's some sort of consensus from the Board that this is what we need to be voting on. So, that's about all I have to say, is by way of introduction, that I'm hoping that this helps people focus their thinking and give their advocacy, and then we can either amend this or have an alternative, scrap it entirely, do something else. I'm obviously open to suggestions.
Thank you, Mrs. Strauss, followed by Ms. Palchik.
Okay, I'm going to first talk about the parts of the straw man that I personally would agree to, and also sort of the rest of my support going forward. In a renaming process, I definitely would take off the table for consideration any old Virginia names that deal with the Magisterial District, such as Lee, Mount Vernon, et cetera, where they have anything to do with a neighborhood or a street name. We have, I mean, Virginia is an old settlement. There are lots of family names. I have no desire to go back in and consider renaming anything. We have the founding fathers. I would also not consider renaming something, simply because the individual during their time had slaves. Because, for better or for worse, we certainly aren't not going back, but George Washington, Thomas Jeffersons, et cetera. So, I would take all of that off the table. There are also certain individuals who, after the war was settled and the country came together, that there were individuals who also had a role in the reconciliation. Robert E. Lee is one. I have no interest in changing anything that is named Lee or Robert E. Lee. I will say that out of the gate. I have no interest at all. So, those are two pieces. I think I have said before, yes, I am willing to change the name of Jeb Stuart, and I will just, again, to reclarify what I would support. One is to remove the Jeb, and it becomes Stewart, which then becomes an English Scottish clan name, just as McLean is of that ilk, and then people can see whatever they want in that. I'm not sure that that is what the community wants. If I were a member of the community in a renaming meeting, I would put that into the mix. Another thought is that I have since learned that in the process of integration, that many of the colored schools, those buildings became community centers. Lilian Carey, by the way, is one individual who was the principal of the colored school that has served the Bayleys community. Lilian Carey is now the name of the community center. At Ludi Lewis Coats, we brought back the name of Ludi Lewis Coats. She was principal of the Flores colored school, and then went on to become on the staff at Luther Jackson. Another idea, if in fact the Board decides to rename Stewart, would be to bring back some of the names of those important African-American educators, who themselves were important leaders before integration. Lilian Carey would be one name to put into the pot. So, in summary, the one piece that might require some adjusting or clarifying is that in the very first one, says the name's clear in overarching association with the Confederate cause. I don't, I don't know. Certainly what I would be, if I were naming a school today, I would not name a school after someone, even at the time that they considered it to be an honorable thing that they did. It still creates, I think, for students attending this school, a situation where we would like to be able to celebrate a heroic person, and I myself could not celebrate as a heroic person, as in the case of Jeb Stuart. So, that is my belief. I don't know how everybody else feels about it, but that's as far as I am willing to go. And again, I remember we had one of the speakers, two speakers early on, two of our students. One acknowledged that she's very much bothered by, I know that there is a painting, even though it is still a silhouette, in the weight room, and encountering that each day, one is confronted by, and you know that the flag, even though it's a silhouette, it was the Confederate flag. A reminder that, at that point in history, our African-American residents and citizens are only not considered completely human, and we're in bondage, which I don't see that as a heroic thing to remind our students of. So, that's my advocacy at this point.
Okay, if you don't mind, I reflect a little bit to make sure that I'm clear. We all are on your advocacy, which is, so, you talked a little bit about the, I'm only asking this, because I want to make sure we stay on task a little bit today. You talked a little bit about what name you would choose, and that's actually not.
No, I know, but I'm just saying, so that I, we're here in a public session, I would put that out there. But in my response to the straw person, straw man vote that is there, most of it, I am fine with. The number one, I might think about tweaking it, because we have other names of places and geographic places that tend, that could be considered as coming out of the period of the Confederacy, and just because it was during the period of the Confederacy, I might not be willing to go back in and take a look at that. But the second part, that it says the fundamental principles of the Confederacy run counter to the values that we hold dear today. So, that is where I stand.
Okay, thank you. But just to clarify, I think for everybody, my understanding of our regulation is that this is the first step, and then if we vote, that there's a compelling need to change the name, then we have another process for choosing a new name.
Absolutely, right. That we are not, we would have to follow our current policy and regulation. That's fine.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Palchik?
Yeah, I'm still sort of reviewing, and I'm not wed to the straw man, but I do think it mostly clearly explains the compelling need for the change. And I apologize that I could not be here in the last work session, but I do, I guess for number one, going back to Ms. Strauss's point, whether that is the association, and whether I've heard some different views, I think the history and the fact around how and when the school was named during massive resistance, to me, adds to that. In addition, I know we're not at the point where we're discussing school names. I understand that if this is, if this were to pass, that would be a future step. I do like Ms. Strauss's recommendations. I think it's time to have a woman, an educator, a female, as the name of a school, but that is just my preference. But I do, I agree that it's time to retire the name to one that better meets and reflects our students today and moving forward. And so, I would be supportive of this main, to be our main motion. I'm open to one maybe being slightly different. I don't know if Ms. Strauss had a specific way to change that, or just.
There are better writers than I at the table.
I second that for myself. So, I don't know if Ms. Evans is open to changing number one.
I'm absolutely open to changing various pieces of this, so, and that's actually what I'm looking for. I think maybe what we're all looking for, hopefully, is what the motion will be, and how, you know, how would we go about changing that to reflect what this Board wants to say.
Okay. That's helpful. I guess I need a little more time to mash over that and see if I have a recommendation. I do appreciate number four on there, as well as the next line that says that the Board finds that the school is unique in FCPS and having this combination of reasons to change, and whether we add reasons as to why it was named, but that I want it to be clear that this is the only one we're considering. We are not looking at any other high schools. I know that has been brought up. I guess the funding one is another question I have. I know there has been some controversy or different ideas as to what we mean by the cost, and what were costs that were going to be incurred regardless of the change, and what are the costs that absolutely would have to happen, and going down the line. So, I don't know if we have Mr. Kern here, or if someone could, if you could give us the latest estimate of what we mean by this.
Yes, Mr. Kern, come on up. Give us whatever you have on cost. Good. You can shut, Mr. Kern. So, I think we're probably trying, well, go ahead, Dahlia, ask your question.
No, that's fine, and you can add, Ms. Hines. I guess I am just trying to see if you can get us a better sense. I know that we've looked at different ways to calculate the numbers, and I've heard estimates starting around $300,000 and then going much higher. So, if you could get a, give us a better sense, A, of what absolutely, if the name were, name change were to pass, and once it's implemented, what the cost would be of things that absolutely would have to be changed right away, and then if there are things that I guess, and it's all going to be, what you've looked at, longer terms, things that would not already be costs that we would be looking at for regular replacement for school materials.
Okay. Basically, there's the immediate, so there's signage and the permanent signage that exists around the building. We looked at that first, went and took pictures of everything, walked through the building. There's the synthetic turf field that sits right on the stadium that says JEB right on it. So, depending on the direction the Board takes, depends on kind of how this plays out to the total final cost. So, it's, do you want the car with all the options, or do you want the car with just an air conditioner? It's kind of where you are. So, it's based on the decision that this Board makes and how we proceed, but any name change is going to facilitate that, at least from what I understand, you're entertaining him from the straw man, that taking that Jeb out would facilitate changing a lot of the signage, the stadium field, turf itself, the main gymnasium court has it painted on it. There's a stone entryway that has the S logo that has Jeb inside of that, and all of those are pretty big-ticket items. A conservative look just at pulling and changing out that one end zone is about $50,000. The gymnasium court that's down would have to be basically sanded and repainted, completely repainted and refinished. That's another $15,000. Then there's the recurring costs, and recurring isn't the right term to use, but the goods that will wear out over time. So, there are things like scorer's tables that they use for their, for basketball, and the chairs that they use for basketball and things like that that would need to replace. So, all of that was considered as we looked into it, all the way down to your cloth goods, your uniforms, which, there's a lot of that, which individually isn't very, isn't necessarily expensive, but adds up as you get broader and broader within what they do. Those are not funded typically out of allocated money from Fairfax County Public Schools. We took a couple of different approaches to it. I worked a lot with Prince William County as they were doing this with Dimwitty Middle School, and how their, kind of the methodology they used, and I worked very closely with my counterpart there, and we kind of bounced some ideas off of each other. And, you know, in the end, the first approach was looking at it as if we're opening a new high school. And so, you know, we're opening a new high school, what would we do for a brand-new high school? If we're renaming a school, essentially, we're opening a new high school. What would that look like? And then pairing it back. Booster organizations essentially amortize the cost of those goods that they're picking up the funding for over a period of five, 10, and 15 years, with fundraising sources coming from teams and different activities that they're doing and things like that. So, to say in one year that cost is assumed by that, by an organization like that becomes very, very problematic, and that it can't happen. So, again, a lot of it depends on the direction of the Board. There are several models that we looked at, from just taking the Jeb out to going all the way to opening it like a brand-new school, and getting rid of everything with the blue and the red, and going all new colors, all new logo, all new everything. So, did I answer your question? It kind of.
Not really.
Okay, sorry.
I think, no, I appreciate that. It's a start, but I guess if we were to say, you know, colors are all staying the same, name is changing, so what are the immediate necessary first-year costs? And then what are maybe longer-term, can some of that?
So, the philosophy we, looking at, so the immediate, those permanent signage pieces, and anything, you know, anything logo that we're going to put our students in, I took the philosophy that that's something we would want changed. If it's important enough to change the name, we wouldn't want them going out wearing a Stewart jersey when that's not the name of the school anymore. So, with that in mind, essentially, and kind of rounded figures from there, the, taking the Jeb out of it runs about $400,000. Taking, you know, completely changing it on the more, yet maintaining the same colors, so not changing the blue and the red and the white mix of the colors, can go $500,000 to $600,000, depending on how far, because there are some of those items that contain the colors and the logo, and could we pull the logo specifically and then replace and repair, things like that. So, it really depends on in-depth, all the way up to the $900,000, roughly the $900,000 mark, which would be treating it like a new high school. What would we do for a new high school? Obviously, we wouldn't have to do the entire infrastructure, but essentially, no matter what we do, take a wrestling mat. They would have to have a new wrestling mat, something all our schools have, they have to have in order to compete in wrestling. A wrestling mat nowadays costs almost $20,000. And that alone, we would, the logo exists on the current wrestling mat, as well as the symbol and the colors and everything else. So, that is a must-replace. So, that starts to add up when you look at those pieces of it.
And so, and I, and that's very helpful. And so, I guess a couple of follow-on questions for that. Number one, these costs of 400, 500, 600, 900, those include everything. There wouldn't be outside of the normal additional cost for changes beyond that, as you're understanding. This is encompassing for each one, other than regular, you know, replacement cycles?
It would be starting new, is basically where we are. So, we're, again, the higher end is obviously starting everything brand-new, flat-out, lock, stock, and barrel. Changing the Jeb, there are uniforms that are currently in existence that don't have Jeb. They just say Stewart on them. So, removing those costs, those individual costs out, is how we start to see the cost drop fairly significantly with that. The big-ticket items are what they are, I mean, that have the Jeb on it, but starting to remove it down. That is generally everything that we were able to put our hands on and see, and it was based on estimates we had. We got some estimates out from the general groups that we use that provide those goods and services to our, to our schools now, currently. And additionally, the work, I worked with DNC and Kevin Snead, and also facilities regarding things like the gym floor and sanding it down. We'd contract that work. It's based on current pricing that we deal with, so, you know, within a percentage, don't quote me on that and say, "Well, you said," but yes, generally, within a percentage rates we're right.
Okay, and my other follow-up question, and I don't know if, are any sort of, well, I don't know, I forget what the term is in accounting, when you're actually, it has a 15-year life cycle, we're going to divide up the cost over those 15 years. Amortization, thank you. And so, does that take?
That actually makes me feel better that I used it correctly earlier, so thank you, Mr. Kern.
Does that take into account amortization? So, for something that's maybe on its 10 out of 15 years, but we're going to replace it ahead of schedule, and so it's, you know, going up to the top again, does this take into account some of that?
It doesn't really, as, we would have to change that as it is, and Stewart works on a fairly tight budget in where they stand now. So, their uniform cycles, which we, you know, we worked with them on where were they on their uniform cycles, it does take into account what uniforms were going to be due this year. I know currently, they're holding on some winter orders on this. They held last year on their fall orders to see, you know, for the Board until they were given notice to, you know, the matter wasn't going to be settled, so they wanted to go ahead and move forward. So, there is some of that, but the impact is fairly minimal. The scoreboards are the bigger name items that are somewhat on hold. I know this Board has struggled with scoreboards, or at least had significant discussions around scoreboards. Struggle is not the right word. You've discussed and have become well-educated around scoreboards. Their scoreboards are dated, with the exception of their softball scoreboard, their stadium and their baseball field scoreboards are older.
So, they were, and I believe when we looked at totals, it's been a while now, it comes to around 150,000 to replace three scoreboards?
I think what we accounted for was about 120,000 within the projections. The gymnasium scoreboard is also not quite as old. It was new, I believe it was replaced with renovation on the inside. We did ask for estimates on paneling and things like that within that, within that group, and could the paneling be changed, as opposed to the full electronics switch out? The savings wasn't that significant, because they have to customize all the paneling, and the electronics have moved on. I mean, it's 10 years old, or a little older than that.
So, sorry, so then what do we estimate as currently 120,000 is what they are up for soon for scoreboard changes, or no?
Well, as you know, the rotation's a little, it's not quite that set. So, they definitely need scoreboard replacements at their stadium. They're in that older cycle. They're in that older group of schools regarding their stadium and their baseball scoreboards. Softball was done about 10 years ago, so they're not as old, but they're also not new.
And do you remember off the top of your head what we're estimating for the cost for the field, and you said softball scoreboard?
The cost we had on the, well, on the, I don't have specific for the fields. I don't remember off the top of my head the specifics for the fields. It was more of a general estimate on what we pay now on a current, on a basic board, and what would be allotted for that, so I don't.
So, I guess of those, let's say of those 400,000, or those 500,000, 120,000 is for scoreboards, or no? Is that accurate?
That's, that's accurate to what we had.
That's accurate, so 120,000 is for, allocated to scoreboards? And you're saying that the majority of the scoreboards are already on the kind of?
They're exterior boards, without question, with the exception of softball. So, there's three, there's softball, baseball, and the stadium. The stadium and the, and the baseball are definitely in that, in that older realm, significantly older realm of schools.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Kern. Any other questions for Mr. Kern while he's here? Yes, Tom, and then Elizabeth.
So, Mr. Kern, so, I didn't follow everything you said, but I'm wondering, in your calculations, how are you dealing with groups and teams that are, you know, say, maybe one of the 22 athletic teams that are part of the, how would something, how would a group like that be treated? Are they included in the costs that you're?
As far as replacing the goods for that team?
So, just for example, so like Jeb Stuart has a crew. They have shells that are quite expensive down at the Aquaquan that are painted with Jeb Stuart's colors. They have oars that are expensive that are painted with Jeb Stuart's colors, and all of their gear and uniforms that they're using, the spirit wear that their booster club has invested.
Your microphone, please.
Oh, it's on, so I'm sorry. So, the question I have is just, how, are you, in any of your calculations, are those sorts of things included?
For the, you picked an interesting team with crew, which by regulation isn't funded by FCPS. So, we did not include crew in those calculations, although it's a discussion, because if the name's going to change, suddenly we have those shells that are not the right color, or not the right logo, or not the right, and what do we want to do with those? But within the calculations, we did count the varsity teams that are funded by FCPS. So, all of the, all of the goods, all of the materials that go with that. In the new school model, let's call it the most expensive one, that went right down to the covers that go on the padding of the blocking sleds, and would we have to replace that, because it currently has the school colors, and replace to a different color, things like that. We did not specifically include crew, though.
Anything that would be outside of the specific funding of the regulation, all of those parent-sponsored groups essentially would be, would be on their own in terms of funding the changes that were needed?
To be specific, within that regulation, based on that new school, so the brand-new school opening model, it would pretty much be Crew and Rifle are the only two programs that would be in, as you described it.
Much following you.
Under Regulation 3860, when we open a new school, the funding for the original equipment purchases for all of the funded athletic programs of the varsity athletic programs is, and the sub-levels that they're with, is funded by the school Board by regulation. It does not include those unfunded programs, which we really only have three of them, which is freshman, field hockey, rifle, and crew.
What if they have a ice hockey team?
Fairfax County Public Schools doesn't recognize, nor do we associate with ice hockey in any way.
So, what I'm saying is, any activity at a school that isn't recognized under the regulations, those parents and those booster groups would be 100% responsible for sort of transitioning to the new name and logo.
Correct, but I guess to clarify, those are essentially community organizations at that point, like ice hockey is a community organization and completely outside the purview of Fairfax County.
But nonetheless, those parents have spent.
Absolutely. No question.
You know, they're going to have to come out of pocket.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Schultz?
So, I heard you say, I have several questions for you. I heard you say, and I want, I mean, maybe you were clarifying, but let's just get down to brass tacks. You said you counted all the varsity teams. Does that mean that we don't do anything with all the JV teams?
All the JV and freshman, all the, all the programs in total were counted as well. So, the JV and freshman teams were counted with the answer.
So, you didn't mean to specify varsity?
No. When I said varsity, I meant, in the terminology we use, varsity refers to the recognized program, so Crew technically, we don't say is a varsity program, it's a program.
What happens to all the spirit wear that's existing in stock?
Currently, spirit wear in stock typically is under the, is in the booster ownership. They purchase it and do the stock purchase, and it would essentially, they would either sell it, or it would be destroyed.
Okay, so sell it to people that?
Would still want an old logo, or?
Right. Right. What would happen, you said that booster organizations amortize the cost of what they get for a school over five to 10 years. So if they're supporting, underwriting, and assisting, you know, student athletes, or, you know, if it's an athletic, whatever, what happens if there is no booster organization? What, what is, what would, what would a school, what would a high school look like in Fairfax County that doesn't have an existing booster organization?
It would be a significant challenge to continue athletic as well as non-athletic programs. Obviously, that would include things like marching band, theater, things like that, which have their, their own support organizations. Our schools are heavily reliant on those support organizations to fund pretty much everything they do. And it's much easier to explain what it is, to say what it is. We, we fund an FCPS, or what comes from the FCPS budget. So if you go to a basketball game, girls' or boys' basketball game, we funded, or out of the Student Activities and Athletic Program budget, the bus that got them there, the stipend for the coach that's coaching them, we funded the official that's on the court that's officiating that game, and obviously the lights and the court and that sort of thing. And then if it's a Friday night, we probably have a police officer on site, and we funded that. Everything else you see, from the basketball to the uniforms to everything else, is funded by a support organization, or through ticket receipts. Often the gate receipts for those games aren't really gonna cover even a portion, I would say, half of the actual cost associated.
So, to be fair then, the costs that you're enumerating are only a portion of the costs, because the rest of the costs, which is, you know, kind of tying into our earlier conversation of total compensation, a, a person isn't, we, we can't talk about the cost to the organization of what a teacher costs without talking about co, their, their salary plus all their benefits. It's, it's all the benefits that make up the total compensation. Well, is it not then all of the additional funding of, I don't know, I, you know, I think it's probably not a good idea to have naked football, you know, we want, you know, players to have uniforms on. So they gotta have a ball, you know, gotta have a basketball to play up and down the court. So if all of that is supported by a, a parent organization, if, if we don't have one, or it's extremely less than robust, are we not then not representing all the costs when we're talking about these costs?
The costs, as they were calculated out for, for the, for purposes of this exercise, related to all of that, either, either way. So it did, you know, let's take if the, if the Jeb was removed but Stewart remained, any uniforms that had Jeb in them, that's calculated into the total cost.
That's a pretty fair leap, because you're making a leap that there's an assumption that it's going to go straight to Stewart, and we haven't even had that conversation yet. So what would be the cost if it's not Stewart at all? If it's, we're just coming up with the name? What, what's the cost? Because we haven't even had a conversation about whether it's Stewart or not Stewart. What, so what is the cost if it's absolutely not Stewart?
A, a fair estimate to, again, open a new school in total, complete, open, as if we were to treat it like we did South County 10 years ago, i, it runs anywhere from 600 to 900,000 dollars.
And that's only our side?
It includes the uniforms and things like that. There's the long-term vision of that amortization. So uniforms are on a replacement cycle. Any school that's been around for more than a few years, you hit that replacement cycle. You're replacing, this year, you're replacing one-fourth or one-fifth of your total uniform inventory. When you do a clean slate, you start all new, suddenly you have 22 varsity team, 22 teams come up with all new uniforms in three to four years, all at the same time. So there's, there's a piece, I don't know if that's a piece of information you want, but it does kind of create this-
Okay. I have a lot more questions, but not from Mr. Curran.
Pardon you.
Okay. I have, I had Mr. Corbin Sanders. Do you have questions for Mr. Curran?
I do. They're probably not cost-oriented as much as team spirit and identity-oriented. And since you are the keeper of all of our teams, you know, I'm, I know many of you know my story. I'm one of the only, I'm the only school board member who lost the identity of my alma mater in Fairfax County when they decided to rename the building, which is now West Potomac, used to be Groveton. And at that point, what they did was they did some modifications to the building as far as putting a new name on it. But everything else was left up to the community as far as the uniforms and things like that. And, you know, I, Scott Suravel, who's the senator from our district, actually tells the story of going to Zares with all of his buddies from the band, and they picked out their uniforms off of the Zares racks. Zares, for those of you who don't know it, I'm dating myself, is the equivalent of a Target today. And that was the most affordable way of getting the band outfitted with uniforms. But the other organizations were slow-rolled as far as when they got new uniforms and different things. Does that have an impact on the spirit of, and community within a building?
You're asking me a vision, an opinion question, I think, here, which I'm happy to share my opinion and what my knowledge is.
Well, you, you are a leader of teams, so that's why I'm asking.
Based on that, I firmly believe, yes, it has a significant impact. To send out your varsity team under one name and your JV and freshman team when the entire vision of those sub-varsity teams is a view to moving towards that varsity level, no different than a, a third chair moving to a first chair in the band, no different than, I mean, anything, you know, a, a, you know, a lead, someone trying to get a lead in a play. Your goal is to move towards that, that level. And our student athletes are. So to have them separated by a different name, I, I do believe would be very problematic. I, and I've based this on the idea that, that it, we don't do that, that we wouldn't do that to our students.
So we've learned from that?
I, I, I would hope so. I, you know, I've, I've said it, and, and you kind of said it, you know, as the, the person, you know, I'm kind of a cheerleader for what we do. If we were to change the name of anything, I, I would hope that the idea is those kids are proud of what they're walking into that year, and everybody is, and we're not dividing them. That it is, everybody's excited about what they're coming into and what they're doing.
So you would advocate that if there were any sort of change, it would have to be an immediate and do it across the board versus a phased-in approach?
That, it, it would be, at this time, we're starting it. Immediate at this point for fall is extremely difficult. I mean, we, our winter uniforms are ordered, and we're looking at spring. So we're, we're, we're doing, I mean, that's as a school system-wide in how we operate. But it would be, here's our starting point, and it's a, it's a celebration of where they're going forward. Not, not having to see one way or the other on what you do, just that's what I would hope. If something was going to happen, we would do that.
Okay. So all of my, I failed my children. They weren't athletes, they were musicians. And they would get uniforms every year that had been worn by other people the year before. Is that how, when you say we've ordered all of the winter uniforms, are those one-offs, or does every, or the uniforms that were ordered this year, the plan would be that next year some other kid would be wearing them?
They typically trickle down. So your, your varsity uniforms are going to trickle down to your JV after a few years of wear. If it, there's a freshman program, they'll trickle down to the, the freshman program as the varsity replenishes. The individual that JV programs may do fundraising, especially where you're, you're smaller teams, so your basketball, where you have finite numbers, may fundraise at the, at the lower, at the sub-varsity level to raise money to buy a new uniform specific for that freshman team. But yet, it, they've, they've all, when I said there was a cycle, they've all been worn. With the exception of the personal, you know, gymnastics, swim and dive, things like that, they actually buy their own uniforms because-
So in earlier work session, they suggest, there was a suggestion made that the cost of renaming could be as low as 23,000 or 25,000. Do you know where that number came from? It was, maybe that was just for, it sounds like for a single sign.
Yeah, I'm not aware of where that number would have come from.
Okay. All right. Ms. McGlocklin?
Just briefly, again, Mr. Curran, I'm just trying to get a sense with something that Ms. Strauss noted earlier, that one possibility before the board is if we were to rename the high school as Stewart High School, like McLean High School, which reflects a clan, not a particular individual. I want to preface it, I'm using that with the Irish Clan as the emphasis there. So if, in terms of Stewart's sports and everything, do the uniforms all just say Stewart, or do they, do they, does it say Jeb Stewart on their uniforms?
Currently, it's about half and half. You have some teams that do reflect, do say the Jeb Stewart and others that don't. We took an inventory of that for that possibility. So it, it's split. So it's about a 50%.
And then I appreciated you were talking about that there's the mosaic or something in the front, the stone, but it's the S for Stewart. It's not the initials Jeb in there.
It has the S and there's Jeb superimposed.
Jeb, Jeb, the Cavalry Rim, yeah, okay.
So the J E B is, is in that stone.
In that stone, okay. And then in terms of the, the sports field, again, does the logo in the center or in the end zone say Raiders and Jeb, or is it Stewart and Raiders? What, what's there in that field?
One end zone says Raiders, the other says Jeb, has the Jeb in it. So based on the, and the center logo is not the, the rider on the horse. The center logo is the, the sabers, the cross sabers with the S. So the center logo, then depending on whether or not Raiders were to remain or not, is in one end zone, and then the far end zone does have the Jeb located in it.
Okay. So thank you. So I think that is something that we have to be keeping in mind, that even as we consider what compromises could be there, there's going to need to be some turf field changes. And, and when I say compromises, I mean something like what Ms. Strauss had said. If we were to go with Stewart, there's still going to need to be some, some facility changes that come with it. And just to my colleagues, while I appreciate people asking the questions about cost, I, I will tell you, I think this just comes down to whether or not the, a compelling need has been met, and that the community has asked us to do this, because that's what our policy is. Cost, yes, we have to be fiscal stewards and mindful, but if it's the right decision to change the name, the costs are the costs. So I, I, I guess I would just say for anybody listening, to me, I'm not basing it on how many hundreds, thousands of dollars. It's just, what's the right thing to do here, and then we have to figure out the costs. That all said, I will speak for myself that I would never consider the community, the Jeb Stewart community be responsible for bringing the dollars together. If this board determines that there's the compelling need and the support to change it has been met, then this board and the school system is going to have to figure out how we cover those costs, and it's not for the community to have to shoulder.
All right. So I, I know I have a go back over here, but let's make sure everyone has had a chance. Tammy has not had a chance yet. Do you have questions for Mr. Curran?
I don't have questions for Mr. Curran at this time.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to kind, if we can finish up. I mean, I don't know if Mr. Curran's leaving the, the building right, right away, but right, while you're at the table. The only question I have, and this may not actually be for you, but since we're talking about cost, the final sentence there, and maybe this is from Ms. Evans, with the expectation that private funding will pay for a majority of the costs, I want to make sure that we are clear before we would vote on something like that about what we mean by expectation. Are, is that a, if, if, you know, does that mean that that is just our hoped-for goal? I mean, what were you thinking when you wrote that?
We have folks in the community who are, have told us that they're willing to do significant fundraising. So I worded it that way with, as an expectation. I, again, this is, this is for conversation today, so if you have suggestions for improving that, I'm happy to hear them.
Okay, no, I just, yeah, one, yeah, Ms. McGlocklin, what was your thinking?
I apologize, but it triggered a question for Mr. Curran, if that's okay. So that is, again, laudable up there, but, Mr. Curran, I think that really does affect our students and the Jeb Stewart community in, in a very significant way. That if the board were to say, "We believe that the name change needs to happen," how many academic years might the students be competing on a field that still says Jeb, their uniforms still say Jeb? Because until we can get the funding based on this motion, we, we could find ourselves in a, in a, in a challenge. So I'm thinking, because you are Director of Student Activities, that covers not just sports, but band and lots of other things, would, would you, again, not putting you on the spot, but that is going to affect a lot of students if we were to have more than a year's lag time for funding in terms of, because they have to be called something, correct, on the schedule? They have to wear uniforms. So am I correct that that's, that's going to be a hurdle?
Specifically to the funding, we don't necessarily do, I mean, for that level of money, we don't do that. We've never seen a, a donation to that amount. Not that there couldn't be, it's not that we haven't worked towards it, we just don't have it. The, the impact of those that identify with a school goes obviously well beyond sports, and frankly, it's 50/50 when you get down to it. You know, we run about 40%, 35, 40% participation at any given high school in athletics. Our Stewarts and Anandale Falls churches tend to have significantly more multiple sport athletes than our, than our other schools. And then you're looking at easily another 30% with crossover within the population that are accessing our activities and other, other programs within the school, including theater, band, chess club, Model UN, you name it, across the board, all representing that school.
Sure. Maybe I should rephrase my question a little bit better. What I guess, what's going through my mind is, there's going to be a fundraising period. Then there's going to be the actual, you know, changing of the turf field itself, changing some things in the facilities, changing out uniforms. So in, in that regard, if there's going to be uniforms that are up for needing to be changed, on the one hand, you could say, "Okay, well, we're already going to do that." But once we have a name in place, then it's just going to be a matter of how long it might take. So I guess I'm a little worried that if we take on the new name, so some kids have a uniform with the new name on it, but we don't have the funding for the rest of it, or if the field, which is probably one of the most expensive components, am I right? I mean, changing out sections of a turf field unfortunately are expensive. It, I, I guess to my colleagues, we are going to be needing to just be mindful implementation-wise, that this, the language in this motion, I think we have to understand, will be touching a lot of student and community individuals, you know, based, based on that language.
Well, I guess that's why I asked about expectation. What is our understanding of that before we go to vote on it? We may all have different, you know. So, I mean, if, if it's preference, I, I think I could support that. I, I'd be a little bit worried about expectation carrying with it the notion that nothing will happen until we reach that 50%, because I, I think that leaves things too wishy-washy for the sake of the students and pushes it out too far. So I think I'm agreeing with you. So I would just maybe work on that language. Did you have a question about that, Mrs. Strauss? Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, I do. Well, it's just, it deals with the private funding. If we went ahead with this, I would not expect the schools' boosters to have to raise this money. I don't think they can. And so my interpretation of private funding would be funding from beyond the, the current Stewart, Stewart community. Because if, if in fact there are people with deeper pockets that are beyond, but, but when, when I see the word private, I don't equate that with the current parent boosters. They're, they're PTSA, they're, you know, athletic boosters, et cetera. I think it would be very unfair to, to ask them. If, if, if we should make this decision, it's our decision, and I would not want to shoulder the, the parents of the Stewart community to have to pay for all this stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I think to the extent that we have outside folks who have offered to help raise money, I think that's awesome, because it takes the load off of everybody. But it is different from asking boosters or PTA to do it. All right. Well, thank you. That may be- That may be language that I would like to work on a little bit more with Mrs. Evans, and good. Okay, I think I had to go back, Ms., Mrs. Schultz?
No.
No? Okay. All right, anyone else for Mr. Curran? Okay. No, thank you very much. All right, any other comments or questions? Anyone who has not had a chance yet? This is our, okay, Elizabeth and Megan?
So, this is where I have...
I apologize. No, Tammy was first, so, thank you. Tammy, go ahead, I apologize, I lost that.
It's okay. At this point in time, I, I am, I, I would find it difficult to support what's up there right now. And I guess I want to begin by saying that I really feel like our board needs to be creating policy that, and making changes that build bridges and not one that creates greater chasms. As I said in an earlier work session, it was my hope that when we created a citizen group, that they would come up with a compromise, and unfortunately, this did not happen. I see that Mayor Stony in Richmond, he is working with a group right now to do the same thing that I think our board had envisioned and hoped for. At this point, it, it is his desire, from the article in the Washington Post that I read, and that was a few weeks ago, to keep the Confederate statues in Richmond and to add the other side of history. I think he was adding some things about Arthur Ashe, who was there, there were some things there, some things are already being added, and, and there were some other things. I, I haven't kept up with it in the last few weeks, but that was the last article that I read. And it's also my understanding that a noted historian will be at the helm of this process. And I think that's very, very important, because that, that was a divisive point in our group. There were opinions on both sides, but no resident expert, if you will. So, when we changed our policy to allow this conversation to proceed, I feel we left many factors undefined, unfortunately for the community. We did not define compelling need, we did not define, define community, and as I said, we, we didn't have someone at the helm to assist with that compromise in a way of, say, the noted historian, the way Richmond is doing. So, by not defining community upfront, many members on this board, including myself, appointed no one to this committee, because I felt it was not my place. I, I felt it was a Stewart issue, because when we named a school any time prior to this, community was those who attended the school, the students, the parents, the teachers, and the citizens who lived within that boundary. And it was my understanding that community was asked to be defined early on by the group, but apparently, that didn't happen until some of the later meetings, and by some accounts, it didn't happen until the meeting next to the last meeting. So, in fact, I believe the majority of people believed community was supposed to be in the Stewart pyramid. There was an email directed at me from a member of the community who wondered in why I was jumping in onto Mason District business and questioned what, if this was normal. And, you know, the irony there was that was also from somebody who didn't live in the Stewart community. So, there was confusion there, and we, we can't have it both ways. Community can't mean one thing, because it, it can't mean two different things. That, so that was not defined. So, if you keep with the issue of community, and we look at it strictly as those who are in the Stewart pyramid, as I said, when this came from all other naming issues prior to the way it was handled, the FCPS survey did not yield majority support for this community, and either the teachers, parents, students, or alumni. The next thing was compelling need. This was never defined. What is the compelling reason to move forward with the name change? And I'm certain each person has their own very pure and, and definition in their head, what compelling reason is to keep or change the name. But, without being defined for the working group out front, without being defined for us as a board to move forward and make a decision, I feel this process has been flawed. Stewart is a diverse school, and from what I understand, prior to this issue, which has been polarizing, what I understand, that this, the school embraced diversity, it welcomed other cultures and, and students in a positive and caring environment, and I'm certain that is still happening in the community as a whole. But, we've heard so many how divisive this issue has become, and that's very troubling to me. Students have testified from us on both sides, and I feel their pain on both, on both sides. I understand how, how difficult this has to be. They're young, they're passionate, and, you know, but, but some students have said their opinions have been silenced, because they're saying, "If you speak out against a change, you're called a racist or a bigot." And no one should be silenced, not on either side. You should be able to speak freely on either side of your opinion. I think it, it's been difficult from those who attempted to turn a difference of opinion, like the execution of this naming issue, when you, when you have different opinions on that, that one that equates to disparaging a person's reputation, that should not happen, and that has happened. If someone chooses not to proceed with the name, it does not make them a racist, and it doesn't make the board member who votes for that a racist, and it doesn't make those who vote to change or, or change have a small, have a stronger moral code. It is, it is a difference of opinion. And because of these things, I feel, because there was no compelling need, because community wasn't defined, because I feel like we, as a system, failed to moderate or mediate in a way that brought the community together, that's one of the reasons I'm not supporting a change at this time. And there are conversations going on throughout our country, people are addressing it in different ways. There, there, there are different ways to address it. I think to pretend, and of course, I'm advocating for the way that I originally had proposed is to come together and compromise the way Richmond is. As I said, I'm, I'm looking forward to what they're doing. So, and I also am concerned to, to pretend that this would be a one-off with Stewart, and we wouldn't go forward and, and look at other ones. I, I don't know if I believe that. I, you know, I've heard through the grapevine that, you know, the conversation on Lee's is going to begin the moment we, we choose to change this name. And if we choose to change this name, and the conversation begins in the larger community, I hope we can deal with the issues, as I said, compelling need, what is community? How can we help that community if there's wide and vastly different opinions, particularly when they're split in, in, in ways? So, I'll start this by saying, again, we need a policy that builds bridges, not one that creates greater chasms. At this point, I don't support that. I guess it would be my preference not to move forward until we have those things defined. I'm, I know how painful that is to this community, I know how painful it has been to this particular board member. I'm just, I, I'm still willing to work in conversation over the next two weeks to try to bring something forward, but at this point in time, there's too much in there that I'm having difficulty with to support it at this time, for all the reasons I've indicated.
Mrs. Schultz, then Ms. McGlocklin?
So, the first thing I wrote down is, what is the compelling need? I came into this meeting, I didn't even know what the compelling need was. I see somebody drafted something that is the compelling need. We, we said a year ago, it has to meet a compelling need, that's what the policy says. This is not written in our policy. It's not in our policy. Our policy does not say, "If the names clear an overarching association with the Confederacy, Confederate cause." If that's the case, Ms. Darnett Kofact, you're absolutely right. So, I get back to what I said, I think June 12th was our last meeting, so it's more than a month ago. If the compelling need is moral, if we're deciding it's moral, then it's moral to continue it for all the other buildings. Because you can't decide that it's moral for Stewart, and it's not moral for all of the other buildings. And it isn't just Lee, there's 32 buildings. And, and Ms. Strauss, you very deftly attempted upfront to shoo aside the fact that we have any other facilities that have ties to Confederacy or slavery. I sat in an audience where people were holding up an eight-foot by 10-foot white sheet proclaiming that they needed to end white supremacy. There were signs in that audience about slaveholders and slavery, and ending white supremacy, and ending and abolishing names having to do with slaveholders. So, the problem I have, when I look at the list, and it's a long list, and we don't seem to be talking about Bush Hill Slave Holding Plantation, Clermont Slave Holding Plantation, Fairview Slave Holding Plantation, Gunston Slave Holding Plantation, Hayfield Slave Holding Plantation, Hyblavally Slave Holding Plantation, Laurel Hill Slave Holding Plantation, Lee's Corner Slave Holding Family, part of the Lee family, Mantua Slave Holding Plantation, Mosby Woods, Mosby's Riders, fought in the Confederacy, that's got to go. Mount Eagle Slave Holding Plantation, Mount Vernon Woods Slave Holding Plantation, Newington Forest Slave Holding Plantation, Richard Hard Chichester, a violent slaveholder, that one's definitely got to go. Oak Hill Slave Holding Plantation. I have to move down the page, there's so many. Ravidsworth Slave Holding Plantation, Rose Hill Slave Holding Plantation, Sangster, one of my schools, not only a slaveholding family and Civil War Confederates, but some of them were KKK members, Judge James Sangster. Shreve Wood, Civil War Confederates, Spring Hill Slave Holding Plantation, Washington Mill, Slaveholders' Mill, George Washington, that's got to go. Woodlawn Slave Holding Plantation, Lanier, fought for the Confederacy, that's got to go. Chantilly High School Slave Holding Plantation, Fairfax, British Lord and a Slaveholder, name of our county, name of our county parkway. Hayfield Slave Holding Plantation, Lee fought for the Confederacy, that's got to go. Madison Slaveholder, also my alma mater, JMU, that's got to go. Mount Vernon Slave Holding Plantation, Stewart fought for the Confederacy, that's got to go. Thomas Jefferson, TJ, you're on the, you're on the chopping block, slaveholder, got to go. And Wilton Wood Center Slave Holding Plantation. So, I can't reconcile the initial comments you made, Ms. Strauss, right out of the gate, that we can't consider any of those, because if the compelling need is that this has to do with the Confederacy and slaveholders, every single one of those 32 buildings has got to go. And this conveniently doesn't include slaveholder, even though I have scads of emails that have it. We have scads of people sitting in audiences, holding up signs, including gigantic white sheets that were painted with that. So, this is parsing to the nth degree in order to fit the answer of what is the compelling need? And the problem is, we never said what the compelling need was when we created the policy in the first place. So, now, we've created an answer to the question that we left on the table a year ago, so that we could drive to the conclusion and slip the answer into what's compelling need at the end. But, if it's moral, if it's a moral issue, you have to do them all, because to leave the other ones would be immoral. The problem I have is, is that whose morals? And Mr. McElveen famously once asked me, when we were putting together our Portrait of a Graduate, and what we wanted our students to be when I added and wanted our students to be ethical, it was whose ethics? We shrugged off a king 241 years ago, and when we shrugged that king off, we said, "We're not having somebody across the pond telling us what's right and wrong. We're going to decide for ourselves." But, the problem is, the "we" here isn't the "we 12," we're supposed to be the representatives. And if we substitute what we believe is moral for what the people who elected us sent us to do, we are imposing our will, our morals, on the public, because the public has decided wrongly. And that's the whole essence of the problem of the transparency of this issue, is if the community had come with overwhelming clarity in community meetings, they didn't, from civic associations, they didn't, from homeowners' associations, they didn't, from business communities, they didn't, from parent surveys, they didn't, from student surveys, they didn't. If they told us, "We want to change the name," I would vote for the name change. And I can say that, because I went through, and I thanked Mr. Curran for bringing up earlier, South County. I have done this. Mr. Stork and I went through the process with South County Middle School, when South County was quote-unquote "being opened." We had all the students in one building, we were opening a new school, and we went through the process with our community. We met with them, we did the community meetings, we met with South County Federation, we met with the PTAs, and they were surveyed and surveyed and surveyed. And you know what? They came back and they said, tell me if this sounds familiar, that they felt that certain interest groups had gotten a hold of the survey, had jury-rigged the answers, and were being disproportionately represented in our assessment of what the name of South County Middle School should be when it opened. And Mr. Stork and I went back to staff, we weren't particularly happy with the answers that we got from them, to be perfectly honest. We asked who the surveys went to, we asked the accountability of the responses, and whether or not they were restricted on individual IP addresses to one response. We went through this process, and in the end, even though staff didn't want to do it, we sort of went back to the drawing board and started over again. And we went back and had more community meetings, we met with people in the community again, we asked for the surveys to be redistributed in a more broad fashion, and they were. And you know what? They came back, and Mr. Stork and I wanted a historical figure. Under this scenario, South County Middle School doesn't fit. It, it isn't a namesake with a principal legacy, it's nobody who's had a contribution to the community, it isn't a local magisterial, a neighborhood or street name. So, under, under this definition, South County Middle School wouldn't even rise to being acceptable under a compelling need of naming South County Middle School. And it's in Lorton. We wanted a suffragette. We really thought that the community would pick something that was historical, which would pay forward, and can you imagine the, the degree of historical significance you would get of having, first of all, a school name for a woman, a school name for a historical woman, historical relevant woman, and, and for women to have the right to vote? That would have been phenomenal. And as, as a lover of history myself, I wanted it. But, in the end, my community told me they didn't want what I thought they should pick. And I, to this day, I probably still think they picked wrongly. I would love to have, you know, an Alice Paul or whatever middle school, but they wouldn't pick it. But, I wasn't going to impose my will on my community. I had to bend to what they wanted. So, I gave them what they wanted, even though it wasn't what my hope or expectation was. And I think that's what we should be doing from the perspective of representative government. I don't know what you're going to do about a high school with a booster organization that has already said, "You know what? We, we are spent. We are, you have, you have wrung us dry, not necessarily financially, but I think emotionally, and that is not unifying." So, I don't know what we're doing from, from that perspective, and where you leave hundreds of athletes, hundreds of theater children... And where you leave hundreds of athletes, hundreds of theater children, and JV, and varsity sports, and in club sports, and leaving parents high and dry. So, I don't know where we are with that. A significant question, I don't know that this has been brought up yet. If we do this and impose our will on the community, will students, who can no longer tolerate it, who have been described like Ms. Darnett Kofax clearly just did, will they be able to pupil place out? Will we allow them in an untenable situation where they no longer feel like they can thrive as students academically, socially, and emotionally? Will we allow them to pupil place out? Do you know the answer to that, Dr. Bray-Brown, by any chance?
No, that would be something I'd have to look into. And I'm listening today, as much as Week Two allows me to take all the issues that have come up, this is obviously one of the deepest issues this board, or frankly, any board in the country can face. It's a national conversation. You all are having it, and it's been going on for some time. And frankly, what I'm trying to do right now is just listen to different board members and better understand how you've gotten to where you are, and where the community and you all are, and trying to help move the system forward. But I can get that information from staff between now and next week.
Right. And when I hear about funding from beyond, I mean, you know, funding from beyond, 1.1 million. We spent two hours this morning talking about how to restore faith in a caring culture with a whole segment of our employees who feel like we have left them in the dust. You know, we have 2,700 employees who are not going to get a raise, who are frozen out by the decision the board made on May 25th with the budget. And in order to reach that decision, we were grappling with where we're going to come up with, you know, 1.1 million dollars for our grandfather, 461 employees who have a bachelor's degree, who we don't want to punish, punish for not getting their masters over the course of their career. And many of them, 18, 20-year veterans with FCPs, who feel like we no longer value them as employees. But we're casually talking about a million-dollar change right here. It's the same, this is 461 employees that we grappled with this morning, and we still don't have an answer exactly how we're going to pay for it, but we're going to go look for the money there. But we can just say, "Well, the expectation is..." So, we don't know what the compelling need is, and we've defined it at the very end of the process, in the very motion that's been triggered by the original policy change we made a year ago. That if we'd made the vote a year ago, this wouldn't have passed, and it would have been over, and the community would have had an answer a year ago. So, that, the fact that it's gone to two years is something that is a creation of this board itself. And now we're talking about potentially a million-dollar tag, price tag, that cavalierly we're talking about getting funding from beyond. I don't even know what that definition means. Means, "We're not going to write a check for it. The boosters have said they're not going to write a check for it, so, you know, it's going to materialize from the beyond?" That doesn't even make sense to me. I mean, I'm shocked to hear, one wrestling mat, and I have a wrestler, one wrestling mat, one, is $20,000, just starting there. And I think about what those students might need for student achievement in the classroom to move their dial? That's what we should be talking about money-wise. What would a million dollars do? You want to get funding from beyond? Go get money and funding from beyond, and have year-round school there. Create some scholarships for those students to go to college. Create opportunities for them to get some career and technical education.
Mrs. Schultz.
Relationships.
Wrap it up a little bit if you don't mind.
Oh, yeah, let's, by all means, you know, let's, at the very end.
No, no, Mrs. Schultz, let's save a little for next week, and other people want to speak. You've spoken longer than anyone in one soliloquy so far.
Well, I've written very few emails on this, and I've talked very little, and I think that frankly, there's a whole portion of the community that is looking for a voice, and I'm happy to give it today, so.
Okay, Ms. McLaughlin, then Mrs. Strauss.
You know, I really appreciated when Ms. Evans reached out to me to get my thoughts so far on where we are and what I might be comfortable with. And, you know, one thing that, with Ms. Strauss bringing up today, you know, would the possibility of naming the school after the Stewart family, which is very prominent here in Virginia? Three generations that fought in the Revolutionary War, War of 1812, and the Civil War, and had a governor of Virginia, and had a U.S. Congressman, you know, the Stewart family certainly has prominence here in our Commonwealth, as does the Lee family. And it's my understanding that Lee District is named after the Fitzhugh Lee family. And so, and I have been told that there was some change a few years after Lee High School was built, that the request was it would become the Robert E. Lee High School a few years later. So, when I look at what this board is wrestling with, Ms. Strauss, I really felt you captured it best. Would I, as a board member in 2017, name this high school Jeb Stewart? No, I wouldn't. But that's because I have a 2017 lens on. And in 2017, I feel it's extremely important that we do have high schools that not only honor some of our greatest figures here in the United States historically, but also that are not controversial, that they can inspire and create honor for the students who go there. Some would look at my children and my husband's alma mater, W.T. Woodson. Is he really a national figure? No, he was the longest-serving superintendent. But, I mean, in the grand scheme, does he hold up to Thomas Jefferson or James Madison as a historical figure? No offense, Mr. Woodson, but no, you don't. And I probably would not necessarily vote to name one of our high schools after a former superintendent. I just, I think, from what I have heard, if you look nationally, there are reasons why some school districts just call them Public School Number 143, because look what happens when you pick a name, there's always going to be some controversy attached to it. But all that being said, the reality is that a year ago, this board thought we had found the best compromise. And I actually pulled up what we had voted on, you know, a year ago. And it's disappointing, because the ad hoc committee failed from day one. And what the board asked for, it didn't happen. It said that this ad hoc committee was going to, the working group, let's see, would be selected by the superintendent in consultation with the full board. So, you know, if it's that we got a final list and said, "Here you go," I don't recall sitting in a work session and hammering out, "Here's who's going to work on it." However, the ad hoc committee got facilitated, I can tell you, as a board member, it did not come back to me that after meeting one or meeting two, that they were so deeply divided, that they were going to now fracture into all these different subcommittees, and that we were going to get a binder that looks like this, thick. And what? Nothing. There's absolutely no consensus here anywhere. And so, now the board is basically dealing with a mini-Civil War within Jeb Stewart High School. It's 2.0. And we've got people who want it changed, and say that it's hurtful and offensive. We've got people who say, "Respect history." And here's my deepest worry, everyone, and this is why Ms. Strauss's, you know, suggestion, maybe we call it Stewart High School in honor of the Stewart family, is because, no matter what we do, the wake of this two-year battle is going to be devastating for a lot longer than just the decision we make on the 27th. And I'm very worried about how does that community heal? And going back to Woodson. My husband, his two brothers, my three sons, they love calling themselves Woodson, because it's Woodson in that name only. They don't know who Wilbur Tucker is. They don't even call themselves WT. It's Woodson. And so, one thing that we haven't had a chance to talk with the community about is, when we look at the Stewart family, and what they represent from the Commonwealth of Virginia, and is that a way to heal the fact that 35% said in a single survey, and I'm not saying it was the best survey mechanism, but it's the only thing we've got, but 35% said, "Change it." And 55% said, "Don't change it." And 10% said, "I don't really know what to do." So, to Elizabeth's point, the board, yes, we are tasked, and it says in our policy, it's our responsibility to name our schools. But, you know, would it all possible to work with our communities? When I look at this straw man up here, and, you know, I, again, want to compliment Ms. Evans for calling me and asking me where I was on this, but I will, as someone who's been her friend a long time, say I'm sad that I never saw this. I know a lot of my colleagues saw it, but I didn't see this. I was not, until I got the email on Friday, there wasn't any conversation with me on, "Can we carve it out and make it look like this?" And so, that makes me sad, that...
Well, if I could just, I don't think anyone saw this until the email. I don't think, unless I'm...
Well, I think there, I mean, not to go into this, but it's my understanding, there were a lot of conversations with a lot of people, trying to find how to make this work. And so, what I will say is that this worries me very much, Ms. Evans, because I think you've done a great job, maybe trying to capture up the concerns among the 11 of us, and, you know, that in itself is a challenge. But I'm going to go with what some other colleagues have said. How do you then say Robert E. Lee High School stays? I mean, it's as much affiliated with the Confederacy as Jeb Stewart is. And I disagree with Ms. Schultz. I'm not going after geographic names. Fairfax County Government can decide what its neighborhoods and its regions are called, but we do pick individual historical figures. And I worry that we will look inauthentic as a board if we think we can pass this straw man and not have people say, "This was just because there was some voices in Jeb that wanted it changed, not a majority, but some, and because the Robert E. Lee High School community wants to keep their name, and we don't want to cause distress over there." We hammer out four different clauses. But the first two numerations there, you guys, if you keep them there, I think the other two just end up making us look like we got cute. And I think that undermines our credibility. And quite frankly, for anyone who's been advocating for us that the name Jeb Stewart's is insensitive, and I don't discount that it can be the legacy of Confederacy, but how any of you would support any board member that votes for this? Go look at the history nationally. People aren't keeping Robert E. Lee named in their schools. So, the fact that this board, you're hearing today, people saying, "I'd be fine, I wouldn't touch Robert E. Lee, but we got to change Jeb, because the compelling need is its association with Confederacy," then right then and there, there is hypocrisy. Now, if people want to say instead, "Robert E. Lee's a national figure that, you know, had a long legacy beyond his years he fought in the Civil War," put that in there, maybe. But I got to tell you, once you name the Confederacy as a reason and compelling need, Robert E. Lee can't be appropriate anymore. And I will also say, the City of Fairfax School Board will probably want to watch this session, because the Fairfax Rebels, who do you think that mascot is? Who are the Rebels? Lanier. If it's named after Lanier the Gentleman, then it's as problematic and wrong as Jeb Stewart. So if this board decides that in 2017, we don't feel it's appropriate to have our schools named after Confederate officers and individuals, then we had better be prepared that this is going to be a name change beyond one school. So, I will tell you all, I don't have my mind made up on what's the right thing to do here. I shared at a private, at a prior work session, that my nephew, my sister's son, is African-American and white, he's biracial. And I have a lot of sensitivity on how my nephew would feel if that were walking into a high school. He's only 11, so I haven't been able to talk to him about it. But I have heard from plenty in the community who are African-American, and say that this name hurts. So, I feel like I've got a lot to wrestle with here, but what I do believe more than anything, is this board's credibility on this is going to be judged as much as what the outcome is, number one. And number two, in the wise words of Dan Stork, you guys, we can't afford a six to a five vote. If we thought the community was divided, you have a divided board that comes down six to five on this, all we've done is, I think, keep a fractured community. So I hope we can find some way to, you know, find a better compromise, so that we can at least, hopefully, have a stronger definitive position in whatever it is we decide to do.
Okay. Well, I would just reiterate, the point of having this language before us today, this really is the first time that we are all sitting around a table, looking at it, and I want to thank Ms. Evans for putting it together, because it gives us 10 days, you know, or at least a week, to work with the author, to see if there are things we can do to it, with it. Ms. Evans, did you want to respond specifically?
Not respond, but just ask a question. I hear what you're saying, Ms. McLaughlin, and so, how would you change this, or how would you, what would you do instead? You know, that's what I'm trying, that was my point in bringing this up after talking to, I think, almost everybody on the board, and trying to coalesce what I was hearing, not everything I was hearing, but some of it. And, again, that's what a straw man's for. You put it out there and have people, you know, shoot arrows at it, and that's fine. But one of the things that I really hope comes out of this is, what is the motion? You know, I don't, we've had a month to think about it, we've had a month to have conversations about it. I know it's a difficult topic. I understand it's a very, you know, it certainly is for me, and I'll have more to say about that. But, so, if you were either going to amend what I have up there, or just scrap it entirely and do something else different, what would that be?
No, I appreciate that. I would think that we might have to look at number one and two in particular, and try to revisit those two. I also, I think, listening to Ms. Strauss, and the conversation that Ms. Evans, you and I both had, in trying to find a compromise, I really would like for us to consider, is, you know, calling Stewart High School after the Stewart family, which, you know, again, someone told me during all of our community dialogues, that Lee High School originally was just supposed to be Lee High School, like Lee District and the Lee family. And if that's the case, then, to me, that's how you solve both the challenges of Jeb Stewart and Robert E. Lee. And as Ms. Kofax knows, I'm very sensitive to the Robert E. Lee community feeling they're getting caught up in this. But once this board decided to tackle the question of having a high school named after a Confederate officer, I don't know how we separate the two. So, in terms of what we would vote on the 27th, I'm so sensitive to the Stewart community, and what this has meant the last two years. And I know, Ms. Evans, you asked us at the last work session, "Please don't let this go further." But I will be honest, we have a superintendent who I think actually is not going to leave us floating out in the middle of an ocean. No, no, no. I didn't get to finish that sentence. Floating out in the ocean. So, our former superintendent, I think, didn't want to touch this thing, and this board was not served well. The bottom line is, we've not had any board direction in it. Go no further than, everyone look at board docs today. There's not a single thing posted under this. Nothing. I mean, at minimum, for the public, why didn't we post the motion to create the ad hoc, the, you know, motion on the naming policy as a whole? I mean... I mean, there's no contextual information here. The report from the ad hoc committee, none of it's listed here. And Dr. Bravran, I know in the end, we can say maybe it's the school board office's fault, but I think you can appreciate, operational decisions, we still, our documents, you know, we get them through, through staff, and there's nothing listed there. So there's been no ownership from the operational team on this one at all. They don't, and, and I think it's been sort of looked at like, the board stepped into this quagmire, the board's going to have to figure its way out of it. And there, there was nothing that came from here that staff that told us, "Well, your ad hoc committee was a failure, so here's guidance based on what's going on nationally." Nothing. We've not had any of that dialogue as a board. So, Ms. Hines, I guess what I would say to you and also to Ms. Evans, who asked me, I honestly don't think we're ready to, to vote on July 27th. I think we could fix something here that gets us further down the, you know, the river on this one to, to an outcome. But to change the name of a high school that is, what, over 50 years old? And, and I, I just, I worry that if we don't do this well, we will disappointed everyone in our community, the people who wanted the name change and the people who want to keep it. So, I've told people I wanted Dr. Bravran to be our lifesaver and help us figure this one out because we've, we've been left, the, first the 12 of us, now the 11 of us, and I don't think we have a way out yet.
Okay. I have Strauss next. Is that a go back?
It's a, it's a, it's a go back. I'm, I have some continued thoughts.
Okay. So I have a couple, I'm sorry, I have a couple of people I think have not shared yet at all on, on the general questions. So I have Mr. Wilson, Mr. McElvein, Mr. Moon. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Well, I appreciate all the analogies presented by Ms. McLaughlin during her comments, being up a river, stuck on the ocean, fighting the Civil War. These, these are, I think, apt. I just hope that we're not in the middle of Pickett's Charge. So, you know, it's tempting in this conversation to just not, not say much because it's such a difficult topic for so many people. And, and like Ms. McLaughlin, I have a niece that's, that's black, and I have a daughter who's Asian, and so issues of race are really relevant in my own household. And we all come to a question like this with different, differing perspectives. But there are a couple of things that I think should encourage us to not feel that we are required to do an up or down vote. Our, our regulation and policy actually do provide us with, with guidance, and Policy 8170, for example, says, "In fulfilling the responsibility," this is the name change policy, says, "The school board shall make every effort to respect the preference of the community." I don't have a sense, even after a year and a half, that we have a clear direction from our community. In fact, you know, what I've heard is that, that about 25% of the community responded to our poll, and about 35% of that portion supported a name change. So if you apply that in the school context, you're really talking, you know, a third of one quarter of the school. And I, and I think that this issue is important enough that we should be very, very far away from a sort of evenly split board. We, we really owe it to the county, to Virginia, and to the country to take a, a, an approach that is sensitive, thoughtful, reflects best practices, and provides a mechanism to, you know, not only allow for the possible name change at Jeb Stewart High School, but allows a mechanism that all the other schools in our county could potentially be the subject of community concerns that lead to a name change. And, and so I think that the, some of the comments that, you know, go to the issue of compelling need really highlight that we don't have a definition of compelling need. And, and compelling, you know, I, I do appreciate Ms. Evans producing this, but the compelling need that she's described, I, I just wonder, you know, if we look through the lens of one and two, well, how do we view the three-fifths compromise in the Constitution and every one of our founding fathers being on board supporting that? Treating people as not fully human? How far apart from our, our portrait of a graduate are we in that? So we must have a mechanism that allows us to coherently address the reality of being in Fairfax County. On the Fourth of July, I was sitting at the corner of Germantown Road and Lee Highway, and I looked up at the sign on the street and snapped a photo, and there on the street sign, it said, "Lee Highway," and pointing out at the top of it were two American flags, two US flags, small flags that have been put on there to celebrate the Fourth of July. That's Fairfax County. The road is Lee Highway, and we're celebrating the anniversary of our independence, Declaration of Independence. And we need to be able to navigate that reality. And, and so for, you know, I think that the comment about not having any input from staff is, is an important one because I think there's an elementary school in Richmond's school system that's named Jeb Stewart. Have we, have we talked to their school system? Certainly Richmond has been talking about this issue of names. So there might be valuable information that we could use. But I think we can't get away from the fact that not only do we need to define compelling interests in some manner, it cannot be just an as-you-go sort of thing. We also need, we also, the, the regulations talk about having sufficient support. What does that mean? We don't have any way to describe that, and we haven't had a single conversation with staff about what that would mean. Maybe we've, we, maybe we could decide as a board that we, we, in the case of Jeb Stewart, we had sufficient support through that poll. That, that's possible. But the board itself, and I believe we should refer this to the Governance Committee, to, so that when we come back to discussing it, we have a rational basis for having the discussion, can, can talk about that. Because it's very difficult to have the con, the conversation at, at, in this context, where I think that people are very careful about what they feel they can say and how they can present their ideas, for fear that, you know, we're going to cross an, a line that we, we haven't seen and, and be labeled in a way that we don't feel is right. Because I believe that this board, given the right circumstances, would gladly vote to rename Jeb Stewart. We'd support it. But the, the real issue is how we got to today. And how we got to today is a, is unfortunately, a very flawed process that doesn't follow our own policy and our own regulation. And, and I think to, to take the view that, well, let's carve out future schools from any discussion, sort of ignores the real challenge that we're faced with as a board that, that is inescapable. And I really think that, you know, if, if we, if, if the board feels that we have to vote, I don't think we should press a vote if, unless we can find a way to have a strong majority of the board. I think that since this proposal ties the name change to the connection to the Confederacy, then we absolutely have to have a policy that is completely, a way that is completely consistent so that we can look at every other property. And not only that, but allows the county to look at their issues. We have the capacity to do that, to come up with something that, that we can generate broad support on the board. I, I actually don't feel a need to, to provide a defense of Jeb Stewart as a person. People love to talk about Robert E. Lee's contributions post-Civil War. Let's be clear, because of Robert E. Lee, the Civil War drug on a lot longer than it needed to. And he didn't live very long after the war ended, about five years. Did he do some things that were valuable during that time? Yes. I don't think there's a whole lot to distinguish him in terms of character from Jeb Stewart. Jeb Stewart was a lot more flamboyant. He was a hero and was given a glowing obituary in the New York Times, the New York papers, I should say, because of his audacity, of the ability to circle the entire Union Army. There's not, there's not a good argument to say that Robert E. Lee is somehow so much better than Jeb Stewart. So we have to take an approach that is methodical, logical, sensitive, and allows for the possibility of change. And we shouldn't be afraid of, of going down that road and establishing something like that. The ad hoc committee, I think I would echo what Ms. McLaughlin said, it, it just didn't serve the purposes we were hoping it would serve. And, but we're here now, and my recommendation, and I would propose to the board, a motion to send this discussion back to governance, that's really, it's never been in governance, to do what we should have done when we changed the policy to include a compelling need, to develop that. That's the motion I put forward to the board.
Mr. McElvein, followed by Mr. Moon.
Thanks, Pat. So, a theme I continue to hear and have heard more today, actually, than in the past, is, is a theme of trying to search for a compromise. So Tammy, Janie, Megan have all, all kind of touched on that. It was something I kind of disregarded based on past, past conversations, but we've kind of come around back to it. And I want to tell you a little, you know, Janie has brought up the issue of the Stewart Clan name, which is, is fine. I personally don't think it's as inspiring as, as other names might be, but I did get an email from a constituent probably about a year ago, and, you know, the volume of emails we receive on this issue is great, as all of us know, but we do take time to read them, so people shouldn't think that communications are disregarded. And the, the woman that emailed me suggested that we name it, name the school after Gilbert Stewart. And so, you know, I've thought about this a little bit. I personally think it's a little bit more inspiring than a Stewart Clan name. There's a Gilbert Stewart Middle School in Providence, Rhode Island. There's an elementary school named after him in Milwaukee, but there's no high school named after him. All of us know that he is one of America's foremost portraitists. He painted six of our presidents, many of whom grace the na, their names grace our other schools. He painted both James and Dolly Madison, George and Martha Washington, Thomas Jefferson, among others. We don't have a high school named after an artist. So, that's my humble suggestion, if we're going to go down the Stewart front, is that, that be considered as well. And, you know, and contrary to what Pat said, I do think if, I do think that this discussion about whether or not we choose to pursue something with the Stewart name, preserving that needs to be part of this discussion. You know, it's, it's not necessarily a next step solely at the purview of the community, although we do have to make the decision, as Ms. Schultz spoke to quite a bit about the, the extent to which we want to involve the community in this process, in the naming process. We have a, a process laid out in our, our, our manual. Do we continue with this debate for another year, continuing to fracture the community? Does the board just come out with a decision now, help people move on? It's something we have to decide. And some of our, some of my colleagues have talked about continuing to prolong this process. You know, we have certainly caused enough damage to the community to date. I, I want us to make a decision. I want us to move on, and I certainly don't support drawing this out anymore. I think the 27th is when we need to make some sort of decision, be it final, be it sending the, the name decision back to the community. But I think we do, you know, Ms. Evans has put together something before us that's a start. I think it's, it's a very valiant effort. Frankly, the, the four-part compelling need, I find, is, is far more impressive than anything I've seen to date that's been put together. So I think we have a starting point. But I would encourage the board to think more about the idea of a compromise, as several of my colleagues have mentioned today.
Hi, Mr. Moon.
Thank you. I think a well said, well done, Mr. McElvein. I don't want to prolong this process any longer, you know, any, any time beyond July 27th, correct? I mean, this, we are at this point, a formal motion to basically form an ad hoc committee and report back to us with a finding so that we could make our final decisions. And then motion was made on July 28th, 2016, after having gone through about a year of community process. So, now it's been two years, it's been two years. I don't, we should not be going any beyond that. It has been difficult, it has been difficult for the community. We could see that. We've been all lobbied by the groups from, you know, both sides, and probably there are more than two different views on this, on this issue. And 11 of us, used to be 12, you might have had 12, at least 12 different views on how to approach this issue. One thing I can agree with, Mr. Wilson, is this, okay, agree with him is, I don't want this to go out to a six to five vote. I don't want this to be five, four, and two abstentions. I want this to be much stronger than having six votes. I want to find a compromise on this one. As something mentioned by Mr. Beck, Mr. McElvein, is something I want to give a more thought, suggested by Mrs. Strauss, I'll give a more thought to it. And I don't want to, if the motion is, if the main motion is, the main motion that passes is to change the name, I don't want to send this back to the community and see the community divided once again. I don't want the community to come back and think that this name versus this name, and because there are strongly held views on this particular issue, cannot reach an agreement. I don't want the community to come back and say there is a 50-50 split. I don't want to even hear them, "It's just like before, two to one even." I don't want that. I want the disboard, which has the ultimate responsibility to pick a name, exercise its authority. Exercise its authority. It's a final authority, make a final decision on July 27th. And I would like to urge my colleagues on both sides of this issue to see whether you can give in a bit, so that we can find something more than six votes, five votes, have a large majority supporting whatever the motion we craft. So I am going to give myself a fair opportunity to consider Gilbert Stewart. I need to learn more about Gilbert Stewart, Stewart Clan, their contributions to our community. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Moon, could I ask you a question, then?
Yes.
Because I think what I hear you saying is that we want to combine for next Thursday, the 27th, the question of finding compelling need and choosing a name.
Yes. So I've been actually talking with our legal counsel, whether he can go back and check the policy and regulations, whether this board, this board can make that decision as a final decision, whether we can do that, or we must send it back out to the community and have a community go through that difficult process again, and come back probably for something that we have received thus far, exactly the same thing.
Okay, thank you. I have anyone else who has not spoken to the general question? Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Thank you first to all of my colleagues who have spent a lot of time really reflecting on this issue. It is not an easy issue, and it's one which, you know, personally, as I've mentioned, I feel the pain of the community as well, because the concept, it's not only changing the name of the school that will impact future students and existing students that go through the hallways of that school, but it also impacts a 60-year legacy associated with the school. And that's something that we have to be cognizant of, because it is a very difficult legacy when you change or put an end to any sort of alumni branding. So I spent a lot of time looking at policies and approaches that have been taken across the country. There are 1,900 different schools and buildings in the United States, at least according to the Southern Policy Law Center, named after, after people that served in the Confederacy. And there have been very diverse approaches. The DOD, when they were approached to rename all of the military bases, said, no, we are not going to do that. We can't do that because of the impact, both on morale as well as cost. California actually pursued a process very similar to what is laid out in this motion. They actually do carve out the renaming of anything that is named after a governmental body or a geographic area. And so I think that's what you see, and I did mention that to Mrs. Evans as well as Mrs. Hines, that that was an approach that was taken. Yale put together four policies that guided the way that they made decisions. Richmond has taken a different approach, which is to add in. Ole Miss actually took the policies that Yale had and then applied them to their own situation. And interestingly, they were, they did not rename all of the buildings that were associated with Confederates. They only renamed a single building, but instead they decided to add in and contextualize. So there are, there is not a single approach to this, and that's what makes it so difficult, because as policymakers, it is something that we like to look at best practices. I don't believe there are best practices. So we're now where we're at, and unfortunately, in December of 2015, when the policy was adopted, definitions weren't added in. And so whatever we do, if we are to adopt a policy where we define the compelling need, we need to know that that will be the compelling need that is applied to future renaming. So we have to be very careful on this. So that's one piece. The second piece is that I do think we have to respect the legacy as well as the future. And that's why if there is a decision to rename this building, I do think that, looking at the reg, and I would like a legal read, obviously, we could make recommendations that say that the renaming of the building would preserve the word Stewart into it, so that it preserves that connectivity to the past. I hadn't thought about Gilbert Stewart. Does he have the same spelling? He does, okay. Huh? Same family? Okay, good. But it was a large family, that's true, and a lot of connections to other families at the same time, and connections to other families whose names are on our buildings. And so I would advocate that we all have to come together on a compelling need if we are to go forward. I do agree with Mr. Moon that it's something that we can't do as a split board. I don't think it's healthy for our community. I would prefer us to come together and figure out what that compelling need is, if there is one. And then the third is, if there is a decision to rename, then we have to look at providing that connectivity, that legacy to the past.
Okay, thank you. I will take my turn, and then I have some go-backs.
Real quickly, there is precedent in the country for just replacing the first name, and there's also precedent where they have just removed the first name and left it as families. So when we look at best practices, they already exist.
Okay, well, a lot of food for thought. Thank you all very much. I think this has been very helpful. Just a few things that I would say. I, you know, our ad hoc committee was created a little bit last minute, because we had a last-minute motion come in last July to create an ad hoc committee, to spend a year or so looking at it. And so I think it's fair to say that we did not do a lot of planning or direction for that ad hoc committee, and they kind of did the best they could. I personally don't think we should ever have expected the committee to make our decision for us. I know that's not what people are saying today, but I think that, you know, it comes down to it, these hard decisions are ours, not some committee that we create to advise us. A couple of things about Richmond, and Ms. Darin Kofax brought that up, but it is a very interesting example right now. I agree, and we're watching it happen. I actually listened to historian that you spoke about, Ms. Darin Kofax, who is helping to lead that, and I know LeVar Stony, the mayor, I know him personally, and I think the, and I listened to that historian talk about what they're doing there, and she talked about this, actually, in the video that I saw. When you have a cityscape, it's a little bit like a university campus, or where you have a good deal of room to work with, you know, you've got streets, you've got avenues, you've got monuments, you can talk about adding. I think that makes a lot of sense, to talk about adding statuary. They just added a statue of Magdalena Walker, you know, and that begins to balance the fact that they have all those monuments of Confederate soldiers, right? It's kind of like Confederate, 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 Arthur Ashe, if you go down that main street, right? Well, now they're adding Magdalena Walker, and they're going to add other things. I think that's a great way to handle a cityscape. But I think that's a different question than what we're asking here. What we're asking here is, have we named this particular building after the right person? And, you know, so we are reviewing the decision made by that 1958, 59, I think that's where we are, right, school board, 1959 school board. And we can't just, you know, throw names all over the side of a school building. We have to actually choose one. So it's a little bit different. But I've listened to my colleagues today talk about finding a compromise that will sort of smooth over the past to the future, and if we can do that, I think that's a great idea. I, just one second, I'm sorry, I took some notes. I do think, it's fair to say that the process has not been great. We threw it together a little bit, and I want to thank so much staff and the community members who stuck with it, you know, sat in a room and duked it out over this very difficult question. And even though they may not have come back with exactly, you know, what we want to do on a silver platter, they are bringing us a lot of good stuff. I mean, a lot of good information that I am finding very helpful to make this decision myself. I'm finding it's helping me flesh out what compelling need means. And I want to thank Ms. Evans for trying to do that as well in a concise way, because it's not easy. I think, you know, we've talked a little bit today about how there are folks in the community who, yeah, they do, they bring in big signs about white supremacy, or, you know, they, and there are folks in the community who would like us to go much further. There are folks in the community who would like us to do nothing, right? But we're, we're going to make those decisions. There's no slippery slope unless we allow it. Every decision we make ourselves. And so I think I'm less worried about that than most people are. I think we are smart enough to make each decision on its own merits, and I think we have been elected to exercise that kind of judgment. I, I think there's more that we can say next week, but I think there is one voice that is not in the room, and it's just, it's never in the room when we talk about this. And I want to bring it to the room right now. One of the things that I've done as a volunteer when I was in my 30s, I did adult literacy training, and I worked with a woman, African-American woman my age, she was in her 30s, and who could not read or write. She was illiterate. She grew up in Vienna, Virginia. She was seven years old when the schools were finally desegregated by court order. She was moved, bused, from her neighborhood African-American school, the colored school of the time, to the formerly all-white school down the street. And at that school, she was told by the teachers, she could not learn, and she did not belong there. Not surprisingly, at 14, she had a baby, dropped out of school, and next time she tried to learn to read and write was with me, 20 years later. So for that woman, and her children, and her grandchildren, they are still here. This memory is real, and it hurts. And we have to care about those people. Those are the people we have to care about. So as much as we have to think about process, and we have to think about whether or not we have a, more than a bare majority, and we have to think about what this looks like to other people, we have to think about what this feels like to the people for whom this is really, really very important, and it's the reason that we're even talking about it. So after that, I have some go-backs. I'll start with Mrs. Strauss.
Okay, thank you. As an interesting exemplar of a school that is named after a military hero, that is very logical, is George C. Marshall High School. He was given the Nobel Prize for the Marshall Plan. And there are pictures of him at Marshall, and there's a little history of it. It's a very comfortable naming of a hero, of a singular military hero, who left a very important legacy, and something that we can proudly show to our students emulate the heroic behavior of this man. His entire life's history is one of inspiration. And on the other hand, we cannot negate the fact that Virginia voted on the side of the Confederacy. We can't do that. And so consequently, when you talk about the slippery slope, we can't, you can't go back and change all these names in these places. I mean, that would be, we would be spending all of our time not having school anymore. We would just be changing names, and I don't want to go down that road. But I do think that in the back of our minds, it is important, is statuary is, and as you talk about a cityscape, it is easier to work with that and to begin to change the balance. And our challenge is in the name of a school, even opposed to a name of an office building. We have learning and teachable moments for our children, and at the same time, Ms. McLaughlin, you're right, the kids think of Woodson as Woodson, they don't know who the guy was. And, which is okay, but the difficulty is if there is an individual who does not necessarily conjure up a great heroic story. I find that troubling, and I will tell you, I'm old enough. I remember the 50s. And it is raw for too many people. So it would be great if we can find a compromise. I do agree that we need to solve this. On June 27th, it has been hard enough for the community. We need to figure this out. Either we do, we don't, whatever you have, you can find a compromise, it would be great, but we need to go on. This has been an open wound for both sides for a long time, and we don't, we don't heal by keeping that wound open, and that is also not fair to the community.
Okay, go-backs. I have Ms. McLaughlin, Mrs. Schultz, Ms. Polczek.
So one of the go-backs I wanted to give was that, while I appreciate Ms. Hines expressing her appreciation to all of the committee members who served tirelessly on the ad hoc committee, every single one, and all of the research that went into it, it all helped build information for the Board. To Dr. Brabham, before I have him leave the door real quick, one of my disappointments still, while my colleagues will say, this tough decision comes to us, no doubt, but as you know, we don't have staff. We each have half of a secretary. So when this three-inch binder comes to the Board, and we had a fractured ad hoc committee that was supposed to be facilitated by staff, and I'm now even looking at something with historical documents saying that it used to be Munson Hill High School, and then suddenly they decided to name them after prominent people, none of this got vetted by objective eyes. So the Board members, all we got from a fractured ad hoc committee was additional lobbying from two sides. So to my colleagues, I will respectfully disagree a little bit. Staff should have said to us, the committee is disintegrated into a fractured, and then we should have regrouped as a board to say, well, now what do we do? That conversation never happened with the Board. Then when this did arrive, nothing's distilled here. No educators within the school system of Fairfax County, who are the leadership of this county, looked through it and said, we've gone through all the fractured reports, and we don't have to tell you what we would recommend you do, but at minimum, we vetted it. I mean, I'm going by volunteer information here. There's, it wasn't for the Board members who set policy and name things to go through and vet a three-inch binder full of information. So whether going forward, what we do as a Board and how we work with our leadership team and the superintendency, but in my mind, where we found ourselves today, very broken, and it doesn't serve the system well, it doesn't serve the Board well. And so I don't have a, you know, half-full Pollyanna view on this. I'm worried, I'm very worried, that this Board is anxious on what's been a two-year battle within the Jeb Stewart community, but to the Board's work, we had one conversation a year ago, and that was creating ad hoc committee. And then we had this conversation a few weeks ago on, guess what the ad hoc committee's recommending? That's hardly the Board deliberating on renaming a school with a 60-year legacy and the fallout effect of a fractured community. So that's my one frustration and concern about where we go. I said it at the very beginning of the meeting, I still think if we can find a compromise, that's great, but everybody, this isn't just about a compromise. This is doing the best thing for the school division. And if it means we have to do some more of our homework in August during our recess time, and we come back in September, so be it. The money's not there to do whatever we're going to do. So, but you don't rush making decisions. So I do have one historical question that if anyone can answer it for me, I'd appreciate it, that there are apparently documents after documents for well over a year or more, dating back from like either 1956 to 1958, that this was Munson Hill High School site. So is that, then, where our compromise is to be considered as well? That it was supposed to be Munson Hill High School? And I'm not going to get inside the head of that 1959 school board when they decided, oh, we're going to, A, make them prominent people, and, oh, by the way, let's pick the Confederate general who defended the hill. I mean, so if you can answer it, that'd be great.
A question for that? Any answer? I'm sorry.
I was going to attempt a brief answer on that. If you go back to the archives, which of course the archives are very bare bones, you know, just so you- know, just so you know, because I have gone through them, they are very bare bones. There are places in there where they refer to the high school at Munson Hill. And there are times when they kind of do the shorthand on that and say the Munson Hill High School. I haven't found anything, and perhaps members of the community or other board members have, where the board at any given time said, we are going to name this Munson Hill High School. I didn't find anything that said, we are going to name it Munson Hill and now we're changing our mind. It was being built, it was a new school, and they said, it's, you know, we are referring to it as the school at Munson Hill because that was its location. So that's my understanding. So that's the best answer I have for you at this point.
No, I appreciate that, but I will just say, in whichever working group created these for each of the board members with tabulations, apparently it's got a digital disk because the files are so extensive. But in the glossary, table of contents, it's showing that for two straight years, multiple dates, the school division, whether it's the bidding contract, it's the funding, it's discussion, there's like dates, days, and references to Munson Hill High School. So I do think that that's just, I will say to everybody, if we're trying to figure out how to thread the needle on this difficult one, at least Munson Hill High School has historical relationship.
And I would just add to what Sandy said. I think, you know, it's at the same time they're talking about Franconia High School. So it was, in the documents, it was referred to as Munson Hill High School, not just the school at Munson Hill site. And I think it's similar to our CIP process today where we say the Western Fairfax High School, right? So.
Yeah, I'm looking at Mr. Plattenberg. Is that pretty much what we do? We give a shorthand name to schools that haven't been built yet?
Absolutely, prior to the naming of the school. Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
It's the reference to the area.
Okay. All right, thanks. All right, I have a couple more go-backs. Mrs. Schultz, Ms. Darren at Kofax, and then Ms. Polczek.
Okay, so.
I apologize. I was just going to say, we have 15 minutes left. We're actually on time if everybody is efficient. Thank you.
So everything old is new again. I think I'm right back to compelling need and the fact that we're not talking about our regulation. If the compelling need is now not associated with slavery, but it's fought for the Confederacy. Because if, I mean, one and two, say Confederacy. Now, we never defined what compelling need is, but we're making it up at the end. So if the making it up at the end is fought for the Confederacy, you must change because if fighting for the Confederacy is what's wrong, and we shouldn't have things associated with people who fought for the Confederacy, that's Mosby Woods, Sangster, Shreve Wood, who, by the way, not only did he, not only did his son, but his daughter was a spy for John Mosby. So they were, they're not even just Confederates. They actually are described as devout Confederates. So Shreve Wood, Lanier, poet laureate, so not only did he fight for the Confederacy, he actually wrote stuff to inspire fellow Confederates to keep fighting, Lee and Stewart. So we have to get back to the question of compelling need. If you still decide that it's compelling need, which I'm not entirely sure how, because even after five hours last month's work session and another three hours this work session, I still don't understand what the compelling need is. And we're talking about, this isn't posted on Board Docs now, it wasn't posted before the meeting, we didn't have it in advance to talk to our community ahead of time. And now in the next 10 days, you're going to still continue to refine amongst ourselves? Because if the compromise, if you're talking about compromise, you're talking about compromising amongst ourselves. You're not talking about compromising with the community. You still have to go back to Regulation 8170.7, Section 4, Clause C, which is, it's not our job to name the school. We can't make it up as we go along. You want to talk about leading for the community, we've already told the community how renaming happens. The names come from the community itself. The community comes up with the names. We solicit names from the community. It's spelled out very clearly here that we have to have meetings with the general public, that all persons attending a meeting may suggest names for consideration. However, voting for the school name will be limited to those residing in the school's attendance area. It says that there will be time allotted for name and suggestions, presentations, questions, and audience discussion, that similar name suggestions will be reviewed with participants prior to the vote, that each household is only allowed one vote for first, second, and third choice, and that there's a weighted point system. We spell out exactly how the naming happens. We can't just fabricate and change the rules at the board table. And this is the inherent unfairness of this process. We made up a policy last year out of the blue. After a year of discussing it and on the verge of a vote that wasn't going to pass, we said, no, 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 now we're going to change the rules. We're going to move the goalpost. So then we changed the rules, but then we didn't define what a compelling need was. And so here we continue to move further down, two years down the road, we're changing the rules again, and we're talking about, we're coming up with the names right now. So this isn't a compromise amongst ourselves. This is the teachable moment. Children understand inherently unfair games. Cheater, cheater, pumpkin eater. That's what they say. They know from the earliest. And this is the visceral reaction, I think, that we're seeing from our community and the fracture in the community, is not whether or not to change the name, it's that the rules of the game have been unfair. And if we don't fairly represent, I don't care how viscerally you feel personally about this issue, this isn't about us. It is not We11. And thank you, Mr. Moon, for bringing it up. Because on top of everything else, in the midst of all of this, the community has lost one board member. Not just any board member, an at-large board member. There should be 12 people sitting here voting. And now they don't even have the ability to appeal to one of their at-larges. And I have heard Mr. McElveen and Mr. Moon repeat over and over again, whether it is a high school that gets splashed across the Washington Post with a sensational story and the need to say, we represent that school too, we represent all schools. Well, where's the third voice and the at-large that represents all schools and all the people in this community to listen? And we don't even have that vote sitting there. So we don't get to determine all the people who want to come to a conclusion here by such and such a date. Let me tell you, if you do that, you will be indefatigably rolling over our own regulations and moving the goalpost again. So now you're going to say, we're going to vote on a name change. You can't pick the name and you got to start the public process all over again in accordance with our own regulations, which is what I've been describing all along, what Mr. Stork and I did with the South County community. And that we met and worked very deeply with them in accordance with this regulation and made sure, when we felt that it wasn't being followed, we circled back around with staff. And even though it was painful and even though it was drawn out, we made sure to go back to ground zero, to make sure that no one felt like their voices were being excluded or that any one particular interest group had an undue weight in the final vote. So yes, it's nice and neat that people want conclusion, but the only way we're going to get to a conclusion and make it happen by the end of this month is if we continue to ignore or continue to change the rules of the game that we have set out from the beginning, that we've changed mid-game and we appear to be changing again. So I'm asking us to go back to 8170.7 and realize, we don't have it, it's not within our power, it's vested within the people who elected us to be here.
Okay, Ms. Darren at Kofax, and then Ms. Polczek. And then I think we're done.
I just want to thank my colleagues for all your comments. I am listening intently and I appreciate what a lot of you are saying. And Mr. Moon, I appreciate you calling upon us to come to a compromise in the next two weeks. And I am hopeful that that can happen, but I am not certain that it will. I do want to say for, I feel like there's been some confusion when, and I guess I am on the side of my colleagues who were talking about this. I think we did the Public Engagement Committee a disservice by not defining compelling need for them. I know they were not asked to do that and we didn't define that. And because we didn't define that for them, it made their job, I believe, a little bit harder because then what happened is, it's when the committee came there, and like Ms. McLaughlin said, it was a rehashing a bit of people's opinions and passions on both sides. And there was never, as I said, there was never that point person that Ms. Hines and I both refer to at the helm, the historian, to disaggregate the opinions from the facts and let us know where we are. And because we define community differently just by virtue of 8170, when you talk about school naming, because we defined it differently in this part of the conversation, because when you go out for public comment, it is within the community. So why it wasn't within the community in the first part is still under question for me. And again, so I talk about not defining compelling need, not defining community, not really having that steward in the, steward, steward in the middle of the policy to be able to mediate and moderate. I am hopeful and I believe this board can do great things and I am definitely willing to compromise in some way. But I think there's a lot of hard work that has to be done and I am concerned that, and I am listening to my colleagues and staff who say, you know, if it's been, it's been here a long time and we need to move this forward. But the 27th deadline is a deadline we set for ourselves and I'm not certain we'll be able to come to our best compromise by then.
Okay, I have one more go-back. Hang on. Ms. McLaughlin, if, do you need a brief, very brief go-back? Okay, very brief, thank you.
Yeah, I would just ask our clerk of the board to please send to the entire board because I was having trouble finding it online, but Regulation 8170.7. So the regulation relates to our policy.
Can you, just as long as you have the mic, what's the title of that regulation to help us out?
It's Facilities Planning. And then it's subtitled Procedures for Naming School Facilities and Dedicating Areas of School Facilities or Grounds. So the reason I'm asking that is because this was revised by the Division Superintendent on February 5th of 2016. So whereas anyone who's read our Policy 8170, it's very lean, to the point that it doesn't really help us understand from school board policy how the division will execute. But if you read under Section 4, all the things about what the division's going to do on behalf of this school board operationally to execute on renaming a school facility, this didn't happen. And I know Ms. Schultz was trying to enumerate it earlier, but here's my worry to, I think, what Ms. Kofax was saying. We might all be earnestly wanting to get to a decision on July 27th, but everybody, our integrity is going to be held to the regulation in addition to the policy. And if we don't have clear understanding of how we, as the governors of this school system, had staff who have to operate by their own regulations, didn't execute by this, this thing, it could blow up on us. So that's, I'm worried as I read through this.
Thank you, okay. Ms. Polczek, do you have something else? No? Okay, all right. Well, I think, Mr. Moon, what I heard you saying is that you would ask for some legal advice about whether we would be within our policy to do both.
Correct.
And then I've also heard Ms. Corbett-Sanders say something about we could give direction without actually naming. So Dr. Braybrand, did you want to add some?
I don't want to build false expectations in Week 2. This has been a two-year process and in two weeks, I'm not sure the superintendent-board relationship in two weeks can fix everything from two years. But I've listened today and I want time to be able to reflect on everything I heard today and to talk with individual board members and maybe even with staff. And I still believe this is a county, we have the brightest minds, just incredible people that we, I'm not ready to say that there isn't a way forward. That's what I can tell you. And a lot of things are difficult, a lot of things are hard. I think one thing I heard today, I don't care what side you're on, it's coming from an honest place, a respectful place, a passionate place. And I told you, I fell in love 25 years ago. Whatever side you are on, on this issue, you're in love with Fairfax County Public Schools. You want to see it be the best that it can be. And names are important to people. Names are important to people. It's part of a national discussion that's going on and Fairfax needs to be a model too. There's different models. That's what I've heard the board say. There are different models. How can Fairfax find the model that works for it? My mind is percolating, but as a now more experienced superintendent, I'd rather, I'd rather percolate a little bit more through the evening and then frankly, maybe I'll have something to share between now and next week. And, you know, 10 days is 10 days. I'm not, I don't want to say it's 10 years and can it all be fixed, but it's 10 days and let's see. So I appreciate getting to be a part of this conversation. And I heard a lot of very, very insightful comments and I respect board members for having this conversation today. Someone said, referenced it somewhere before. I think if perhaps this conversation had happened more often over the last two years around this table, we might have already had a solution in front of us. But let's see, let me continue to take everything I heard today and see what's next.
But that's the challenge we have, is we wish we had more time to talk about everything. Now, I see Mr. Wilson waving at me. We are about to end on time. Is this something really, really brief and sort of practical?
I wouldn't raise my hand if it was otherwise, Ms. Hines. I can assure you, I have no desire to have our meetings go any longer than they already go. But I do want to say thank you to Dr. Braybrand for speaking up and voicing a sentiment of optimism in terms of concluding this matter. And I guess the one ask I would have is, when you're thinking about what it means to have a compelling need, and I don't, I think maybe this is why I have such a problem with the description and the four points, is I believe that a compelling need has to be driven by a harm. Right? You know, there's, a compelling need speaks to resolving a harm that's happening. And I don't know that this does that. And I think that Ms. Hines was very eloquent in talking about what might be the harm in her mind of having this name. But I think that if we can drill down and come up with what that compelling needs, then I think our conversations could be more productive.
All right, thank you, everybody. We'll take a three-minute break and then go to our next work session.